Welcome to the August 16, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Lucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting and see if there is a problem? Please speak up immediately so that we can, if a technical difficulty may be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Information on the board, Dr. Smiley.
Yes, I have a relatively significant announcement to make this evening. We had hoped to hold off and not have to institute a mask requirement. However, at this time, given the data that we are seeing, we will institute a mask requirement beginning Monday for all indoor activities. We are frustrated by this. We had all hoped to celebrate the end of COVID and the return to what we hoped would be a normal school year, but our numbers are staggering. We are now 17 days into the school year and we have had 871 student quarantines.
And how many?
Not how this works, guys. Come on, pay attention.
871 quarantines represent five.
Hold on.
To a seven-day absence for our students, and that is unsustainable. We want students in classrooms. We want students to be learning from their teachers in person. And given the cases that we've seen and the quarantines that we've seen, we feel that this is the necessary step, really the only step we can take. We certainly don't want to return to a virtual environment. We know that a virtual environment is a struggle for many of our families. When you look at 871 students, even if that's 1.5 students per family, there are about 550 families that have been significantly inconvenienced in terms of supervision and certainly, again, in terms of lost instruction. So we know that many families have reached out hoping that we would not go this way. Many families have reached out and said, "We should go this way." It's a very polarized issue in the community. There's very passionate feelings on both sides. And again, we have held off as long as possible, but given what we are seeing, just as an example, we ended last week with about 218 quarantines. And again, there's no specific threshold for this, but this week, if you look at our dashboard now, we're in the mid-400s. We are quarantining on average approximately 51 students per day, and again, that just is a lot of lost learning. We also have an announcement for students in quarantine. Students who are in quarantine will be able to access their classroom instructions through Google Meet, and they will be able to listen in. They still have the ability to get the assignments, certainly, that's always a consideration. And at this point, they'll also be able to hear what's happening in the classroom. So a lecture, directions, instructions, any of those things, they'll be able to hear. They're not mandated to. We're not going to take attendance. It's not an interactive environment, but it's something where they are able to listen in. So we're happy with that development, and quite frankly, it's probably a little bit tardy. We should have had that in place, really, from the start in terms of for quarantining. But from this point forward, we're satisfied with that. Ultimately, and I understand many are going to be upset with this, but it's based on our data. This isn't based on anything other than what we are seeing with our Parma kids. And as one example, we had, yesterday at Hillside, we had a positive case that resulted in 18 quarantines. If we had had a mask mandate in place, it would have been 111. So that's the type of situation we are working to prevent. We continue to follow the quarantine guidelines from the Cogga County Board of Health, the Ohio Department of Health, as in our estimation, all of the school districts, certainly in Northeast Ohio, are doing the same. We feel that they are the medical experts, and we will continue to refer to them in terms of how we plan to proceed with our quarantine.
We want leaders, not followers.
We also want to note that this will not be in place outdoors. This is an indoor requirement, and it's an indoor requirement for all students, all staff, all visitors to our buildings. So this will again be in effect on Monday. That I would take any questions from the board.
Definitely not something I wanted to hear today about masking. I wear it out of respect for everybody else, but I think...
Not out of science?
Excuse me. I'm speaking. Thank you. So we did want to see this, but we don't want to see the loss of learning either. We don't want to see kids have to go to virtual learning again. I don't think that you guys, most parents I've talked to about virtual learning hated it, had to make adjustments and stuff. So we don't want to go back to that. Wearing a mask is a minor inconvenience to being able to stay in school. I really think it's not going to kill you to wear a mask.
It'd probably kill you if you don't.
What study have that your mask is protecting you?
If you want to ask a question, you can fill out a form or you can jump in.
There is a...
These are our tax dollars that work.
Excuse me. And quite frankly, sir, if you jump in again, we're going to have you removed. This is how this works. There's a procedure in place to participate. If you don't want to follow the procedure, the gentleman in the back is going to ask you to leave. If you don't leave, we're going to call the Parma police.
Do you want to fill out a form and ask a question later?
You're more than welcome.
More than welcome. There's forms over here with Ms. Penn.
No, sir. This is not a question and answer type.
No, there was nothing about that.
If you would like to fill out a form to participate, it's right there.
Would we be able to speak if we fill out the form?
No, that is not the...
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
But you can write down what you're concerned, and I'll read it verbatim.
All right, I have three done. Okay, I do have a question.
Sure.
What is the procedure? What does it look like if we have, if a visitor fails to comply, if a student fails to comply, if a staff member fails to comply? What's the procedure?
We had last year extremely high compliance with this. I will say that toward the end of the year and in the summer school, you know, there were some parents that started to get a little bit worn down by the mask, but their children continue to wear them. This has, again, been something that our students have overwhelmingly positively responded to. If there's not, quite frankly, we treat it the same way we would treat failure to comply to any directive, right? I mean, you know, we have masks, we will give students masks. If there is a medical reason, a student cannot wear a mask. We had some of those last year, we keep them in the office, and, you know, that student doesn't wear a mask, and we invite parents to submit those just as they did last year if they need to. Staff members, it's not really an option. Quite frankly, visitors aren't either. We expect compliance.
And how long will this continue for, Dr. Smiley?
We're going to continue to evaluate the data. Quite frankly, I would love to say as short of a time period as possible, but we have to see what our numbers look like. What I don't want to do is say, you know, X number equals this. The one piece that we've learned with COVID is that we have a, it's a moving target constantly. We all thought we were done. I thought we were done too, but that hasn't been the reality that we've lived. So, you know, we're going to look at it next week, we're going to look at it the week after, we're going to look at it the week after that. We're going to constantly look at it. I'm in, our nursing supervisor is right down the hallway here. I'm in our office three or four times a day checking how we are, where's our quarantine numbers, and I'll continue to do that and keep the board abreast and keep our senior leadership team abreast, and if there's a change that we can make, we'll communicate that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. Communications?
Hi, do you not have any?
Actually, I have. Yeah, Mr. Schweitzer is extremely upset that he can't be here. He actually is on a pill this evening himself, but he wanted to send his words along as well, for the record. A mask mandate for our school district is certainly not something I had hoped would ever happen. I, along with countless others, felt a strong recommendation for masks as well as protection for quarantine would resonate with our community. Data has shown, however, that it has not. We all want our children in school every day, not in quarantine. In order to make this more of a reality, we must set with science and medical professionals. With a masking mandate, we will be able to drastically cut down on the number of quarantine students, thus allowing them to remain in class and be active workers. I am so saddened that this pandemic continues to cause havoc with all aspects of our society, especially schools and children. We need our kids in school, and we will continue to carefully watch the data and recommendations of our medical professionals. Thank you.
Anything else for the board?
No.
Mr. Lucio?
Yeah. Can I be further? Okay, so every six years, county does an appraisal on all properties, and then every three years after that, in between the six years, they do a triennial update, which is based on, this one's based on the 2020 sales of properties. So in Parma, you can see the property values, taxable property values are all up 24%. Parma Heights is 22%, Seven Hills is 19%. I'll let people look at the math for a second. Like I was saying, under the state law, it has to be appraised over six years and then the triennial update over three years. The triennial update was held this year, 2021, and this will affect, you'll get notices at the end of September saying what your new property value is going to be. If you want to appeal that tax value, that starts on January 1st, and you actually have to have data why you want to appeal it via appraisal or some other documentation to appeal it. So in 1976, there was House Bill 920, which we talk about all the time, where it pretty much sets that only the inside millage can increase or decrease your property taxes. The outside millage, which I'll get to, does not change with inflation. So this is what I was talking about with House Bill. So there's a $5 billion, $5 billion lobby, if the property values go up, then the millage will go down, so you collect the same amount of money. You don't get more money in the outside millage just because property values went up. These are our outside millage we have right now. It's 3.8, the 4.6. So with property values going up, the millage will go down on these, so we get the same amount of money. So these are the levies we have. So even with property values going up, that first levy, we're only going to get $7.6 million. We're not getting any more. You can't get any more money on voted levies than you did in the first year of the collection. So the inside millage, which I talked about, is the non-voted millage, which is 10 mills, and it's split between all the different governments in the district. So for Parma, it would be Parma, it would be the county, could be the health district or park district. It's only 10. Our portion of it is 5.1 mills. So we will only get an increase in taxes on that 5.1 inside millage. That's what I was saying there. And then our inside millage, that we are going to collect more money on, is the $2.1 million. So that is what we would get. The city's going to get some, the cities will get some also in the health district or park district, and try C also gets a little sum. So any questions? So this is the outside millage. Like I was saying, you can't collect any more in the future than you did in the first year. And here's the chart of what the school districts, this is the second page, but from Lakewood on down, what they're getting in additional escalated revenue. Can you go back a bit, Ken?
Any questions for you to add on that?
Are we getting a 19%? Is that a nine?
Yep, a 19%.
Do you know what that breaks down to per, like, those numbers obviously vary wildly. Do you know what that breaks down to roughly per student? Is that, like, similar across students? So like, if someone has X amount of students, does their, I can't even read that from here, 516?
No, this isn't the state form, which is, I think, what you're...
No, I, yes.
This is property taxes specifically.
My question to that was, that this is a good example of, where I was getting with that, was this is a good example of the wild variations within socioeconomic statuses of the property values within our communities.
Great point.
So that's what I was trying to break down, is that some of the more affluent communities, even though they appear to be getting less money per student, per capita, it's significantly more money than what, say, ours breaks down to per student in our district. I mean, when you look up there, that's a pretty...
We're getting like $2.1 million estimated more.
Right.
And I guess if you divide that by 19...
Yeah, I just did the math. It's $223 per kid.
Okay, so that was the question. Whereas if you look at some of the smaller districts, even though they're getting, like Strongville's a great example, look how much money they're getting, but their population is significantly smaller, so they're getting significantly more per student because of the affluent community. So that's kind of where I was going with that.
And these increases are based on the 2020 sales of properties, actual sales.
Okay.
So, I live in Lakewood, and the taxes went up 27% because their houses are selling at ridiculous amounts.
Right.
Not sustainable, but right now, that's what they're selling for, and that's what the county is facing the increases on for this triennial update.
So as an example, in three years, if the market crashes, that $2 million we're getting could be a $2 million loss?
Well, in three years, they'll do the reappraisal.
Right.
So they'll actually send a person out to look at every single property. That's a little different than the triennial update, which is based on sales of properties.
But then, it could be the same, it could be more, but it could be less. It could be a loss.
Yeah, I just don't know. Maybe this trend continues, that houses keep going up, or maybe there's a bubble to burst. I don't know.
Right.
I can't forecast that, but maybe they will actually have an appraisal, or maybe they will have to have a simple proxy look at it in three years.
Got it, okay.
Just as an example, Rocky River, so, you know, you would think tends to be a little bit higher property value. So we were at $223 per kid, they're getting $324 per kid.
So a hundred bucks more a kid?
Yeah, even though the percentage is a little higher.
Right, and their dollar amount is significantly, right, okay.
So that's a good point.
Any other questions, Warren?
Thank you for putting that together, though.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll post it on the website.
I appreciate that. Do we have any amendments?
We do not.
Now, the time is...
No, we don't. We just have a court right here.
One down here. Okay, now, a thoughts or ideas ready? Okay. All right, so at this point, we're open to meeting to public address the board on tonight's agenda items, and we do have one request.
So this is, this is the ones that are on the agenda items. If there's anything else that are, like, requests to be heard or to be flat, those come at the end of the meeting. We want to hear these before we vote on those action items, and then the other part we do at the end of the meeting.
Right. Everybody understand? Okay.
Lake John 74, Douglas Bay, Parma, Ohio. Tonight, you're voting on agenda item 2021-09-423. I have questions about several items here. We have a contract that we're giving to a teacher, and 94.05% of the contract, but on top of that, we are giving them a 10% pay raise in order to ever walk on our school district by giving them five steps. The question is, how do they qualify for that pay raise? Number two...
Can I just answer?
Well, let me finish. Let me trip. Number two, we have the same problem with kindergarten PLV, PBLA, where I understand blocks, because those carry from job to job, but we're giving two people a 12% increase before they ever step on the school district by giving them six steps. The other items in this unit, we are hiring seven varsity assistant football coaches. We are hiring 13 middle school house leaders. That's for just Grebry. We're hiring six more middle school house leaders for Shiloh. And then we're hiring 15 mentors for the school district. Can we explain how this type of hiring is qualified in our school district? And I guess I have to ask for the board that replied to me someday, what is a mentor? Why do we hire 15 of them? I'll leave that to you.
I can do some, please. Yeah, I, sure. Well, the hiring process, mentors, I answered the last question for you. Mentor is a senior teacher that would help a newer teacher get organized and get themselves situated in the teaching mode. I don't know if you guys are familiar with, teaching takes a good three years to really be solid at it. Having a mentor or someone to bounce things off of, all that is required. It's a good thing. It's not a benefit. And I'm sure the pay is not ridiculously fantastic. I was a mentor teacher, and it's just helping, allowing me to help them out.
Can you back? Is review a, I have a question about you specifically. Is that a supplemental position, though?
Yes.
Correct?
That would be a supplemental.
So it's not a new hire?
No.
It's just an additional responsibility and compensation to go with the additional responsibility?
It's an additional cost, right?
It's to help teachers.
Yeah, it's a supplemental. I'm sure the teachers pass their requisite requirements so that they can actually get certification. What Mr. Johns didn't mention is some of the supplementals have a dollar amount. I know you talked about the positions, but I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if some people can look it up. I think it's $1,500 or so. These are very small, small stipends that we give teachers for very important work.
Absolutely.
And there's a myriad of coaching staffs, and I'm sure they're not all at 10 grand or whatever. A lot of those contracts get split, so...
Yes, you're correct. And the one that I brought up...
We're not going to go back and forth.
No, I don't want to... You asked your question, sir, we're going to answer.
Did I miss any of them?
Yeah, I have a couple more. The contract, steps are given based on teacher's experience. So if someone comes in at 10 years, they have 10 years of experience, we actually don't give them credit for all of those years. So when you're talking about the fifth step and the sixth step, that's because they came to us with experience, and teachers often get paid based on, you know, their experience. Mr. Vaughn just said a second ago about three years taken, you know, to get your feet under your... So that's what, why we give those steps. Again, many teachers take pay cuts to come here for a variety of reasons, because they may have 10 or 12 years in somewhere else. We're not giving 10 or 12 years of credit, we give five or six. The house leaders are actually, at our middle schools, we have what are called houses or teams of teachers that work together, and the house leader sort of coordinates those activities. So if there's a field trip that the whole team's taking, that's the person who's going to do, collect permission slips. If there's a parent meeting coming in, because they want to meet with all the child's teachers, that teacher's going to return a phone call instead of meeting up. That, again, while Mr. Johns likes to talk about those big numbers, again, $1,500 maybe for those supplementals. So we're talking about very small stipends for very important work that continues to help our students.
Can I answer one of them, too? The seven varsity assistant coaches for football, what was not brought up is that is one stipend split between seven assistants. They're based on percentage, so if we had popped that up on the board here, which is an attachment on the public agenda, that is one stipend we pay. We didn't hire seven more coaches at seven separate stipends. It's one position that is split into different percentages, 14%, 15%, 14%, 14%, 14%, 15%, equal to one whole. So those coaches split the responsibility and really essentially work on volunteer time. I mean, those are pennies for all the time that they give to the kids. That's not hiring seven varsity assistant coaches at full fakes. They make a couple...
$4,000 split seven, wait a second.
Yes. Can I ask?
No.
Sorry. We said that we have work procedure, that's why this is...
We have bigger protocols in place.
I understand it. I just had a question.
No, the answer's no.
Well, I submitted my other stuff, so I apologize, but I just wanted to keep that going. If you want to email later, that's okay, but we don't do back and forth. I'm just HR and professional, so I just was...
Happy to answer your question on the way out, actually. It's just we cannot turn around more meetings.
Okay.
All right. The answer is both of the questions. Okay, so I move to adopt resolution, we'll just move on then. So I move to adopt resolution 20... Try this again. I move to adopt resolution 2021-09-410, approval of the written record of proceeding from August 25th, regular board of education meeting.
Second.
We have motion in a second to adopt resolution 2021-09-410. Are there any question or comments from the board?
No.
Roll call, please, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-09-410 has been approved. Question tonight is Mr. Kreis.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2021-09-411, granting authority to the administration to enter in a contract with Nick Waters Consulting LLC for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution 2021-09-411. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I add a comment? Because when we see consulting, it tends to look like some type of superfluous service. This is a requirement of our grant, the 21st Century Grant, that provides after-school services for students, and it's funded out of that grant, so this is not a cost to our school district.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lucio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021-09-411 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-09-412, approval to enter into a contract between the Career and Technical Education Job Training Experimental Learning Program of the city of the Parma City School District and the City of Parma Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
We have motion in a second to adopt resolution 2021-09-412. Any question or comments from the board?
Yes. Dr. Smiley, do you know what project the career tech students will be doing for the city of Parma?
If you give me one second, I will provide that information. There may be a few more than one. Should we just come back to that?
Yeah.
Can we just come back to that? So roll call, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Hold on, did you want the answer before we voted?
I don't need the answer before we vote, because I...
It's true, it's recommend, I mean, it's routine, so...
Yes, I'm uncomfortable with...
You're just curiosity?
I'm curious.
Then, yes.
Yes, have it. Office tasks such as sorting, pollinating, and shredding, and basic office housekeeping.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for the delay.
So, yes.
No, please.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021-09-412 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-09-413, approval to adopt the career and technical education middle school programming of the Parma City School District.
We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution 2021-09-413. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I would just say this is really...
Super exciting.
Yeah, it's really the strength of our district. Yeah, it's really the strength of our district. Many districts aren't able to offer career tech programming at the eighth grade level. And you see listed Business Foundations, High School Writingness, Woods, Gateway to Technology, and these are great courses for our eighth graders that, again, I think sets us apart in the Parma schools and really is a great feeder for our tech programming, which also sets us apart.
Exciting stuff, for sure. Anything, anybody else? Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 413 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2020 dash 09 dash 414, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with family, with the family during the 2021 dash 2022 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 414. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 414 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 415, authorizing disposal of auxiliary services equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 415.
You're right. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can explain this. We have auxiliary funds that usually flow through us, but through the last state budget builder, we proved some of these parochial schools had the option of taking the money themselves. And Matthew Luther opted out, saying, we don't want, we don't want to go through the school district, we want to do it all ourselves, which is fine, but some of the equipment that we purchased with auxiliary funds that is the name of the school district is now ours, we've got to take it back. So they probably weren't happy that we're taking back some of that equipment. Some of it doesn't have any useful life anymore, it's old, but we can't just give it to them because they want to purchase it with the money. That's what this is referring to.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 415 has been approved.
Business.
Oh, you got, you got ready to run, so are we done with curriculum?
Unless another member has anything to discuss, we will conclude curriculum.
Right back at you, Mr. Kreis.
Now business.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 416, authorizing award of bid for one 2022 Chevrolet Express 2500 cargo van for information systems, DIS.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 416. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
My one comment would be this is permanent improvement money, so this is not our operating budget.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 416 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 417, authorizing sale of obsolete MacBook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 417. Are there any question or comments from the board?
I'm sorry, Amanda, give me a second.
Yeah.
Anybody? No comments? Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 417 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for the seat. All right, Mr. Kreis, right back at you with finance.
I move to adopt resolution number 2021 dash 09 dash 418, approval of prepared district popular annual financial report, a CAFR.
Second.
C-A-F-R.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 418. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll explain what CAFR is. So we take our annual report, which is probably like 90 pages, and unless you're an auditor or an accountant, you don't know what it means. So CAFR is, it takes a like eight to 10 page document, it's easy to read for the public, they can understand our finances, and we make it available to the public either through hard copies or we email it out or on Facebook, Instagram, whatever, so everyone can look at it, they understand how our finances work and what they are the last three years and compare itself. So it's an easy to read financial report, is what it is.
And it's just $2,500?
$2,500. It's for more transparency for the community.
Any questions? Anybody else?
No, I just think it's a lot easier to read than the CAFR, which is the labor report. And it makes it simple and easy to understand for, for the layman that doesn't understand finances. So I think.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 418 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 419, approval of the August 2021 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 419. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just thank you again. Perfect one.
Nope, thanks.
Seeing none, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 419 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 420, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a second, a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 40, no, 420. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 420 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 421, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a second, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 421. Any questions or comments from the board?
So I'll explain some of these, some big numbers up there. The first one is $419,000, it says TAN, which is Tax Anticipation Note. We had in 2016 or 17, prior to getting here, we took out a 10-year, it took a note of what it is, and we have $419,000 left over, which we plan on using for the demolition of Hannah. And the money's sitting in our account, we just have to appropriate it so we can spend it. That's what the first one is. There's one there for $622,000, which has ARP idea. ARP is American Rescue Plan, passed under President Biden, an idea of special education grant. And under the rescue plan, they granted us additional $622,000 that can be used in addition to what we have now, but not for the same services. Mr., am I doing this correctly? Am I saying it correctly? And the one below it is the preschool special ed, that's $46,000. So those are from the American Rescue Plan. The other ones are just club accounts, there's nothing out of the general public, it's being appropriated.
So essentially, those are grants to add additional services for our special education department?
Correct.
Okay.
Right out of your mouth, huh?
It's grant funds through us or through the American Rescue Plan.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 421 has been approved.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 422, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 422. Any questions or comments from the board?
There's one particular on here, they're all wonderful, and I know you'll speak to that, but there's one really great one I want to notice, Chick-fil-A for really taking note of our nutrition services. Folks who rain, sun, sleep, shine, all of them were out there passing out food distribution, so it's just, everybody took note of it, so.
Yeah, very nice. Well, as usual, I thank the people for donating and remembering the Parma City School District with kind donations. It's very generous and it's always welcome.
We appreciate it.
So thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Lucio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 422 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for the seat. Awesome, thank you, Mr. Kreis. Mrs. Carpus, legislation.
I do not have anything tonight, Dr. Smiley, do you have any on the other?
No, it's been quiet. Quite frankly, it's been primary campaign mode.
Yeah.
All right. Human resources, Mrs. Rutz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021 09 423, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amount, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leave of the absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 423. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Lucio.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 423 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 09 424, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
We have a second, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 424. Any questions or comments from the board? Any of these people here, I know Penn's not here.
No, but we will have some representation at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Mr. Lucio.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 424 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021 09 425, revision of certificated substitute pay rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 425. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to comment. This, our substitute fill rate has been 19% this year. Now, whether or not raising it to $100 is going to make much of a dent in that 19% is hard to predict. $90, which had been our rate, was really at the bottom of the county. We've now climbed to maybe the lowest third, the top, the lowest third. Our research really shows we were going from anywhere from $85 to about $125. Obviously, we're not going to go all the way to $125. That would be a significant increase, but we did think that a marginal increase could attract some more focus to our classrooms. The issue when we don't fill a position is that you're either splitting classes, meaning you're putting more students in the classrooms for teachers to monitor and try to teach, or you're actually taking prep time away from teachers. And when we take prep time away from teachers, we pay for that, and when you add up those periods, you're paying more. So we did, today, Governor DeWine announced that school districts who are struggling to fill positions should call the National Guard. And so that was actually a call that we placed today. My hope is that I get a call soon back from the National Guard. As we talk about potential uses, substitute teaching could be one of them. We're certainly, we're certainly in need of certified folks that will, qualified folks, I should say, that will teach and monitor our students.
So when you talk about, like, that call for the National Guard, we're not talking about, we're, just for clarity for everyone here.
Governor DeWine's had, in his press conference yesterday, it was actually about bus drivers. Now, I'm not real sure how we would put someone without a CBL, commercial driver license, in fact, we couldn't legally. So I'm not real sure why he was indicating that we should call the National Guard for bus drivers shortages. But he did indicate that the National Guard has helped out during the pandemic in things like distributing food and things like passing out tasks. So quite frankly, we're at a point where 19% is worth a phone call. And I'm hoping to be in touch with the gentleman and talk about potential uses. If anyone in our public who would like to substitute teach, they can tell our human resources department, they will walk you through the process to be on our list. And we'll talk.
Just to add on to Dr. Smiley's point, when we do have periods subbed, it ends up being like $4.
Period.
And so if there's six periods or seven periods in a day, you're like $250, $300. When we sub to here, it's $100 if you tax it, so it's like $128 per day. So we'd much rather pay $128 and have the same sub all day than pay $250, $300 and have different teachers proud of your classroom. That's, we hope we're raising the rate to $100 attracts some of the teachers that may be going, live in Parma, but they go to another district because they pay $10 more. That's what our hope is.
Right, very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lucio, roll call.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 425 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021 09 426, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, approval of classified stipend, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated leave of the absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 426. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Lucio.
Mrs. Rutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 426 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021 09 427, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 427. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Brad.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 427 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021 09 428, approval of change in salary schedule for substitute employees.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 428. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just again, small minor increases to try to bolster fill rate.
This goes along with the previous resolution.
Right, goes along with the substitute teacher one. All right, same pattern. All right, anybody else?
No.
Oh, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Brad.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, the Resolution 2021 dash 09 dash 428 has been approved.
Unless there's another board member that has something to ask or add to this meeting, that will conclude to the recess.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Brad. Mrs. Carpus, policies?
We do not have any policies tonight because of the hard work of Ms. Handel and everybody on the policy, the work of the policy on the administrative side for getting us all squared away.
All right, very good. This leads us to this portion of the annual chicken.
Can I say this before you begin?
Before.
And I want to address our audience right now. Please understand that I am happy, the board is happy to entertain your questions afterward. These are going to be read in the record. We will try to address them as we can. But if you have comments, I understand that I was pretty stern in potentially, whatever you want to classify that as. But we really do have protocols in place that have been vetted and were put in place to make sure that our board meetings can be business, board business. I respect the fact that you're community members who might want to express an opinion to me off the record or in person. And I'm happy that you're here. And I'll stay as long as you want to have those conversations. But we can't turn our meetings into shouting matches. And before, I felt that that was where we were headed. And so that was the reason for my tone and my quickness to jump in. We will do the best we can with these questions. And again, I'm happy to stay afterward and have all the dialogue that you might want. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
All right, that's welcome. All right, so we would like to have this question read in tonight's record. I'm sorry, and wish to have the answer read into the record. This is from Michael Johns, 7401 Dogwood Lane, Farm Ohio, 44130. See, I'll make the list here. I'll read this verbatim as it is written. Question to the Farm City School Board, 9/16/21. One, I am requesting the release of the curriculum for the SEL program being used at the Hillside Middle School, Greenfire Middle School, and Shiloh Middle School. A list of books being used, B, list of reference items being used, C, list of handouts being used, and D, syllabus. Two, I am requesting the list of consultants by name supplied by the Diversity Center of the Northeast Ohio to the Farm City School. Three, I made a records request for the payments made to consultant Krista Boski. I was told no payments were made to this person, yet I have a document that showed this pension was paid, no, this person was paid by the Farm City School. Why was I told Krista Boski was not paid by the school system when payments were listed on the school budget item? This is from Michael Johns.
So, Mr. Nusio, I'm going to need your help here a little bit. Does this qualify as a public records request?
It sure does.
It does, okay. So we will release to you then the curriculum as you ask. For the consultants, again, qualifies as a public records request and we can get that to you. You're going to have to help me out on the Krista Boski because you handled that.
Yeah, so Mr. Johns put in, we talked about this before.
We're good.
Mr. Johns put in a request. And then on that date, whatever the date of the request is, we looked to see if we paid the person he was asking about, which we did not. But after his request date, she got paid. So at the time he made a request, there was nothing, there was nothing to provide him because it didn't happen. Then a different person made a request, which we provided all the payments we named out of SRT Fund. And she was on there, but that was after Mr. Johns's request. What was the timing?
But we will honor your public records. We're good on that one. Thank you.
Number two, you got to take that. All right, very good. Thank you. All right, number two. I wish to have the following questions answered in the next seven, two hours. I wish to have the question read in tonight's record and wish the answer to be read into the record. This is Danielle Downs from 81 Ton Sierra Oval, Farm Ohio, 44130. And as I said, I will read verbatim. Vaccine instead of curriculum question. There seems to be a constant conversation at this. Why are teachers finding it necessary to discuss the vaccine with their children? Why are the teachers' viewpoints in politics, COVID vaccines, et cetera, even being told to our children? Online learning during a quarantine seems to be more of a 10-day suspension. Timing issue, voicemail suggestion. Would like to share a suggestion. Miss Danielle Downs.
Thank you. You know, vaccines, our sort of direction to our staff really at the beginning of the year was really not to comment in one way or the other, obviously. So if that is not happening, the best person to follow up with is your child's principal. I'm not debating that it did happen, you know. I'm sure that that has happened. Best person to follow up is your child's principal, who would then, you know, talk to that teacher. If that's not satisfactory, then the call would come here and either Mrs. Strachan or myself would address it. The online learning piece during quarantine is a challenge. As I addressed in the beginning, we're happy that we're moving to the Google Meet where students can listen in. There is no perfect answer here. The schools who did, and I'm sorry, I'm going to use a word that I can't stand. It was called synchronous learning last year. And synchronous learning meant, you know, teachers got prep for class here, prep for class online. And it was really an abysmal failure. And most districts, in fact, I don't know any who are still doing it that way because of the challenge of having essentially two different classrooms to teach to. And so we didn't want to adopt that model. We realized that quarantine is going to challenge. And so that's why we're addressing it with this new change. In all honesty, and I know it's unpopular in some circles, the mask requirement will also help us to dramatically reduce quarantine numbers. So those are the two steps we're putting in place. If we need to continue to revise, and I know you may have had a suggestion, I'm happy to take it after the meeting. And we're always open to your suggestion.
Ms. Downs, choose Ms. Downs.
I don't believe you.
Is everything okay there?
I don't believe you.
Did we answer everything for you?
I don't believe everything was addressed.
I'm glad we have vaccines and I'm like.
The voicemail was the one thing I didn't understand in the question.
So that was me wanting to make a suggestion.
I'll take your suggestion after.
Oh, I see.
Unless you wrote it down.
And then I also have several exhibits that I can give you too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because, oh, and that's what I wanted to piggyback. You had said, you had to take it up with the principal. And then to compare, and that's why I'm here.
We'll do it after.
Okay, carry on.
Thank you.
I got one.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, the next one is, I wish to have the following question answered in the next seven, two hours or by the next scheduled board meeting. Name is Alexis.
O'Hussen.
O'Hussen. Thank you. O'Hussen from 6131 Creek Haven Drive, Farm Heights, Ohio, 44130. Question is, what are kids with sensory issues supposed to do? Can I use a medical exemption? Do you get proof of a positive? Do you get proof of a positive student?
Medical exemptions will be granted in the same way that we granted them last year, which means, you know, if a parent presents a letter from a doctor, then we won't require them to wear a mask. We do not require, at this time, proofs of positives. Quite frankly, our experience has been that no one is making up the fact that they have COVID and they're going to have to stay home for seven to 10 days. Next.
All right, next question. All right. Where's the speech, part of the board action? My current attendant, I don't think this was the correct. Tucked around boss Kathleen Wilmick.
Yes.
So what, were you expecting to speak on an agenda item? Do you want me to read this?
I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak on an agenda item?
No, I, that was just.
You just checked her on boss. Okay, this one, sure. All right, so how would you address unmasked student with a mandate in place? Why is there a mandate? And when there is no proof behind a mask, when no two or three people are wearing one mask, et cetera?
Well, we would address a student who didn't wear a mask in the same way we would any other candidate comply. Adults ultimately are in charge of the classrooms, the teachers. Principals are in charge of our schools. So we have to ask students, it's called the local parenthesis. When a parent isn't there, and they're not there during the school, the school becomes the parent, which is a legal term. So we have to ask our students to follow adult directions. If they can't, then, you know, we follow any type of discipline procedure. I'm not sure what she meant by no proof. I'm guessing that, you know, there is, there are some folks who have sent me articles saying masks don't work.[1553.45]